Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. Next is the silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, September 22 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, September 23 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is Agenda Approvals, Additions and/or Deletions. How does it please the council? Seeing nothing, we'll move on to Presentations. Presentations for former Mayor Barbara Payne slash City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I am excited that Ms. Payne is here and joining us tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to you to recognize her formally by the Galt City Council.
Thank you, sir. Barbara Payne, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your kind advice when I started out my campaign. I can tell you it was quite accurate, and I appreciate your advice. It has served me quite well the entire time I have served. So I'm assuming these are for her.
Opportunity to work with the staff and the people to try to make our community even better. And I'd like to say that I am so happy to see some of the projects that I was able to work on. The Galt Community of Character Coalition is still going on. And I think it's, especially today, it's so important that we recognize the things that we value. One of the things that has always been close to my heart has been the youth and the fact that we still have our Youth Commission continuing. I think it's so important for our youth to feel like they are a part of the future, especially now when there are so many distractions. The little community gardens that I had the pleasure of visiting with a lot of friends and everything. I'm so thankful to the council for allowing us to start that little garden. It meant, and Armando was so supportive when we came up with the idea. And today I was out there, and we had such a diverse group there. There were gardeners from, I hope I'm saying it right, Zimbabwe, Africa. We had people from India, and we were all in harmony. As well as the youth, the fact that our Head Start School has come out there and been a part of that garden. Again, the youth, when you get involved in the earth, it gives you a new perspective of everything. I just think it was just such a privilege that I was able to sit up there for a while with you all, and I felt like I had the support of the staff and the community. And my only thing that I would leave in saying to you is, anything that I was able to accomplish, including the express bus, which I was so happy that we were able to have take some cars off the highway, put people in something that's comfortable and successful. All of that came from listening to the people to find out what they wanted. And so that would be the only advice I would leave is listen. And there are so many opportunities out there for you to make a difference. And the rewards that I received from being a part of your group far means more than anything that I could have contributed. So, thank you again, Armando, for all your support with our, whatever we wanted to do in the parks. And we had lots of things. I had my "I Love Galt" t-shirt on today where we went out to the parks, and we actually gave them away so that the parks would feel pride in their neighborhood. I think Armando's one of the few of the staff members that I still recognize. But, Armando, all the times we spent working together, I do appreciate it. And again, thank you for the opportunity. The rewards were all mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as I find my way back, perhaps the other council members would like to say a few words.
Yeah, just real quick. Barbara, thank you for your years of service, not only up here as a councilwoman and mayor, but also your service in the community through Rotary and other organizations. Greatly appreciated. We miss you. And anytime you want to come back, we have a home here for you, I'm sure. Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to, a few words. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge my longtime friend Barbara Payne, former mayor in this city. She's a community leader. She did too many years, lot of years, for community service and for the city. And I would like to mention, today I get the opportunity, back in 2012, I was not in the politician. She came to my office and she asked me, "Paul, you want to be a planning commission?" In the beginning, I denied. I said, "No, I'm satisfied with my life. I do not want to be there." Then after a couple days, I called her. I said, "No, I talked to my family." So I'm going to say if I'm here today as her guidance, she moved me to, from my personal life, to go to the politician. Thank you, Barbara, and thank you. Thank you so much.
And also, I'd also like to thank Barbara for all of her service. Thinking back to when I was on the elementary board and the early days of CAST and the not-so-fun times when Paul was on the planning commission and Barbara was up here, and we were trying to figure out how we were going to put a school out on the new development out east. And we made it through, so thank you for your hard work and working through the not-so-fun times.
Thank you once again, Barbara Payne. We appreciate everything you did for the city. Okay, next is everyone's favorite, Public Comment. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
We have one. Do you want me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The Public Comments section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. We have one public comment. Gail.
Hello. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to come up here. I'm here at great risk of my own to speak in front of you guys. But I just want you guys to know that I live at Galt Place, and there is a lot of things wrong over there. And we haven't had hot water, you know, since March. Not a lot of hot water, you know, service, and it's still like that now. And there's black mold that these men that came out, they just took down the old sheet rock and put new up there. And there's still shower water from the tenant above splashing into the parking garage. So, you know, and my car got its gas siphoned, and so did other people in the building because our back gate gets stuck open and people come in there in the middle of the night. So I just, I gave you guys photos of what I think is wrong there. But I just hope somebody could do something about it because we don't deserve to have to live that way, you know? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Gail, so thank you for the photos. My fellow council members are and will be viewing those. Send those around, and then if we could, I'd like the police chief to have them. Then if you don't mind, I would like the city manager to have them when all said and done so that it could assist him in the process. Thank you. No more public comment?
No more.
E is Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On September 14, I did attend Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. There was a lot of items on the consent calendar. The only thing my concern was, I think, bringing back to the city. Because back in 2022, there was a citizen initiative, a major, transportation want to pass it, but it failed the last time. And for the last six months, we were trying to see if that major can come back in 2024. As a board, we did recommend for the survey. How many, with everybody shared the survey? And the last meeting, the survey, was come back. On this one, it's a 42% only favor. So, and then there was the reason on the survey because the main problem, every citizen, have homelessness. That's a 57%. And the crime and drug rate go up, that's why citizens focus on 14%. Affordable housing, 9%. And down the road, I was looking, traffic congestion is even 0%. So as this time, according to the survey, most of Sacramento County citizens, they are more concerned on these things like homeless, crime, and affordable housing, and the cost of living and inflation, instead of focus on traffic congestion and public transportation. So there's only sporting 42%. In order to pass that major, we need two-thirds. So we don't vote for it yet, but we did a very long discussion, all the board member. And I believe it can be coming very soon. That's my personal, I don't think so many vote for it to bring that major, that many lower number in order to lose money when I can win in 2024. So what is, is vote is not here, but I just let my citizen know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Papino.
I haven't had any Commissioner Committee meetings, per se, since the last meeting. As it relates to the CAST, we did have the fentanyl awareness on the 12th over at McCaffrey. It was an excellent presentation, very informative. The people that were there were very interactive with the presenters. It's unfortunate that the turnout was really disappointing, actually. It was pretty small. Rich Lozano and I were there, and some members of the CAST Committee and just a handful of the public. But they did say that the student presentation at McCaffrey was well-received and well-attended. And I will have a special meeting of the Cable Television Commission tomorrow, which I will report back on at the next meeting I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, I only had one meeting. I chaired the SACOG Land Use Natural Resources meeting on the 7th. We had several items on the agenda. One of note is we had SACOG put in for a federal grant, and it's going to impact green means go-type projects. And where they overlap, green means go meaning green infill projects where we can get people housed and near transit corridors and things like that. And so that, I guess, the focus of this grant program from the federal government is those projects that are in green zones where they overlap into high-needs communities, underserved communities. And so we have a few, and we are one of 11, I think, cities or jurisdictions that are going to be eligible. So I'm sure our staff is going to continue to work closely with the SACOG staff on getting an opportunity to put in for some of these projects. So that was the main item. The other item had to do with a presentation from Placer County where they are developing, have some development projects in the county, up in the Auburn area. There are some mixed use, so housing over retail. Think of like Galt Place situation. Also, some additional commercial and light industrial areas in development in this area. The interesting thing was is they're moving forward on it, but this was a plan that was started in 1994 and kind of went dormant. And so now they're bringing it back again to kind of focus on getting people out of cars, putting jobs in housing where they need to be and on central corridors. This one's up Highway 49, kind of in that area. So that was pretty interesting. And then lastly, I'll be attending the Cal City Annual Conference beginning tomorrow. And I've had several meetings on the Resolutions Committee that I'm a part of in the Delegate Committee for the Annual Conference. So no resolutions have come forward yet, but we anticipate there could be some beginning tomorrow and into Thursday. So I'll report back out on that at the next meeting, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I attended the Youth Commission meeting. All the new positions were elected. And I guess the simplest thing to say, since it was mostly about elections, is that the chair, being more organized and more focused, made a huge difference in the attitudes of the youth. They were actually far more energized by the end of the meeting than the beginning, as opposed to many of ours. On the 26th, I'll be attending the Homeless Commission meeting, and I'm looking forward to that, actually. So next is F, Information and Consent Calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 7 be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by council member. Is there any by the council? None. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. So 1, receive file warrants for period ending September 11, 2023. 2, minutes of the regular meeting of September 5, 2023, with corrections. 3, reassessment District Number 2015-1 closeout. 4, accounts receivable write-off report for uncollected accounts for fiscal year 2022-23. Public educational governmental fee funding. 6, contacts for on-call planning and environmental consulting services. And 7, IT infrastructure replacement upgrades. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by the Vice Mayor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you, everyone. Scheduled matters of public hearing. Subject of public hearing, amending the fiscal year 2023-24 fee schedule. Report by Mr. Hines.
I'm going to turn the matter over to our Finance Director, Matt Boring.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a pretty straightforward item. It's, the item presented tonight is Proposed Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Master Fee Schedule. The original fee schedule was approved with the fiscal year 2324 midterm budget on May 16, 2023. And after City Council approved the fee schedule, the Consumers Community Services District updated their fees. So as part of the city's fee schedule, we collect some impact fees for CCSD and then remit them. So as part of the city's fee schedule, we collect some impact fees for CCSD and then remit them to them. So that triggered us to revise our schedule. So that's the majority of the changes. Staff also went through and found a couple formula errors in there, so we updated that. So it impacted, the clerk's office had a few fee changes. The majority of it was in the community development department, and that includes the CCSD impact fees. And then Public Works had a few minor changes. The city manager approved a temporary fee schedule once we identified the correct amounts. So, so far to date, all of the fees that have been charged to customers have been the correct fees. So we're just bringing the item to council now to formally adopt the policy.
Is that all, sir?
That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. With that, with that, I open the public, I open, with that, I open the public hearing to receive comment. Does this, does any council member have questions or public comment? None. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
With no comment, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Sorry. Adopt a resolution to approve the updated FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fee schedule for public services. Do I, so move? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Regular calendar, Public Works Department, subject approval of consultant contract amendment for the wastewater treatment plant influence channel upgrades designed with Next Gen CIP number fifty-two OC. Mr. Sellings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is basically to consider approval of an amendment to a contract that the city Public Works Department entered recently for a project to upgrade our influence channel at the wastewater treatment plant and what we call the headworks. And with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to our deputy director, Mr. John Griffin, to provide some additional information, after which he and I will both be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight, as Mike mentioned, is to authorize a contract amendment for improvements to a headwork structure at a wastewater plant. Just a little background, the purpose of a headwork structure is to screen out all the solid waste before, so that it does not enter our waste stream, makes the plant operate more efficiently. The headwork structure has two separate bar screens. The bar screen that we're going to replace is more than thirty years old. So prior to starting this project, the operations team researched number of alternatives and selected a bar screen to move forward with. And what that does is that allowed the design effort to, and also helped us reduce costs, help things move quickly and reduce costs. So as we sat down with the engineering team and really kicked off the project, we took a step back and looked at the big picture, recognizing that we would have to isolate the headworks. We looked at other, what other needs would we want to tackle at this time? That would be a simpler project now and save money versus having an emergency repair later. So we identified a couple items, and those would be replacing the existing isolation gates with new automatic gates. And then with that channel being thirty years old, repairing any corrosion damage to the concrete structure. Along with that, we looked at some safety improvements. And those would be including adding catwalks and some additional lane at the headwork structure itself. So with that, that would, those would be changes to the scope of work for this project. So that's the reason this amendment here is before you. And in addition to that, this amendment also adds bid phase support services. And then the action will authorize a project contingency. So as Mike said, with that, we're here for any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just one quick question. We were just recently out there for a tour. Is this the first kind of stop that we went to that have the two big pipes coming out of the ground?
You've got the big structures that probably stick up eight, ten feet that are angled at a probably thirty to forty degree angle from that large concrete structure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the staff report, thankfully, that we went out there for a tour and hopefully the city will do that again. It made a lot of sense, having seen the whole facility, what you were talking about. My only thought is, is there anything in particular that maybe the public might be interested in? If, maybe just the date of the next tour?
Would probably align with Public Works Week next year, which I believe is the middle of May.
Yeah, typically, it's about the third week in May. I mean, if there's interest, certainly, I mean, we could do something, you know, probably in the next couple of months even before the weather turns. You know, again, if there's, there's a group of folks that are interested, we'd be more than happy to show them around, so.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. So with that, I'd be looking for adopt a resolution to authorizing the city manager to execute amendment one to the agreement to design services with Next Gen Utility Management in the amount of sixty thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Two, authorizing contingency of thirteen thousand dollars. And three, authorizing Public Works Director to execute a contract amending with Next Gen with approval contingencies, sequo exempt, ex, sequo exempt, fifteen three oh one C. Do I have a motion? Moved by the vice mayor, seconded by the mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next is communications.
None this evening.
J is communications, city clerks report. I imagine there's nothing as well. Communications by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to circle around to Barbara Payne again. Barbara, I didn't get a chance to tell you how much our first conversation meant to me. And I wanted to tell you that publicly. I just celebrated anniversary number three, so three years here in Galt, as of August thirty-first. When I came in back in COVID year twenty twenty, I met with the council, of course. I met with the staff, of course, and you were the first citizen meeting I had. And everything you told me in that meeting pretty much came to fruition. So thank you for your clairvoyancy. But also helping me understand the fabric of Galt and who we are here. Because that, I felt like that gave me a head start in understanding this, the constituency that I now have to serve as city manager. So I just wanted to take a moment and tell you thank you, because I really appreciated that time. And over there at Cafe Latte, and I remember it, I remember it well. But thank you so much, because I left that meeting, yeah, I think I understand my marching orders now. And thanks so much. I just wanted to tell you that. So, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to speak on the comments regarding Galt Place. A little while ago, probably a couple of weeks ago, I asked Community Development Director Craig Hoffman and TJ Godati, our code enforcement officer, to give me an update on the periodic visits that TJ makes to Galt Place. And so he sent me a memo, and I wanted to read this memo into the record. The past three months, I've started regular monthly site visits at the Galt, at the senior complex with property management. And we do a site walk. The site walk goals, identify and verify any complaints that the city can legally address based on building and code violations. Number two, if any violations are located, work with property management to achieve compliance. Some past examples of that have been some rodent issues we dealt with in twenty twenty-two and some roof issues that we dealt with in twenty twenty-three. Number three, review any calls we get from tenants, maintain confidentiality, of course, and present the complaint to management so it is addressed. Number four, we want to educate property management and the tenants on what can be addressed by the, addressed as a city, but also be a partner in assisting them in addressing the issue. Even if it's not a city responsibility, we still, we still want to help to create open lines of communication. Number five, continue to work with property management and tenants to create a safe, clean and well-maintained senior complex. So TJ Godati, again, who works with Director Hoffman, makes monthly visits to Galt Place. And so I am very interested in getting those pictures that were passed out earlier, so I can pass those on to TJ, so he can follow up with a visit to our, our folks down at Fourth and D. And as far as other staff comments, we are oddly quiet tonight. Chief, was there, oh, oh, sorry. And Chief, did you have any?
No.
Okay, great. All right, looks like it's Director Selling tonight.
Hi, thank you, Lorenzo. Just a couple of quick things. You may hear our street sweeper in efforts, you know, to start prepping for cleaning the streets ahead of the storm season. Basically, what we're doing where we can't get in with the street sweeper, we're giving notices to property owners to trim up trees. Technically, it's eight feet above the sidewalk and fourteen feet above the roadway. So I know, and we've gotten some calls back about what's this about? And, you know, people concerned, are they going to get fined? Or, you know, what kind of penalties or whatnot they might experience? It's really just a courtesy notice. You know, if they can, if they can get their trees trimmed up and stuff, then we can get in there with the sweeper and clean that up. And then just along that, you know, with the storm season approaching, probably in the next month or so, for folks to just try to get your leaves and other debris and whatnot up and away. And that, that'll be appreciated and help all of us when the rains do come. So the other thing I wanted to make the council aware of is a big milestone was reached recently. C Street Project Improvements is out for bids right now. And that bid closes, I believe it's the twenty-sixth of October. So, okay. So a little over a month, we'll be receiving bids. And then I would expect probably the second meeting in November, possibly the first meeting in December will be coming to council for awarding that construction contract. So anyway, just a quick update on C Street. So thank you very much.
And Director Selling, would you mind giving just a quick update on the repairs on, I believe, A Street coming up?
Yes. A Street, so the contractor there at the Guard Dog Storage is to be paving the next couple of days, actually. So there will be some disruptions to traffic. I would recommend people detour around it primarily during the day tomorrow through Friday, potentially. They are hoping to be done by Thursday, but Friday for sure. And of course, our concern there is with the Old Galt Festival coming up this weekend. We want to definitely have that done and ready to go, so there's no disruption to that event. So I think that's what you might have been looking for.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, we'd like to conclude by just reminding everyone, we're going to have our fourth and possibly final cannabis forum here tomorrow night, starting at six PM. And I'm looking forward to it. We, we started with a smaller group, and we have solely worked ourselves up to, I think we had thirty, thirty-four people at the last meeting. And so I figured it might be fruitful for us, for us to move it here. So we'll have, we'll do that tomorrow night. And I'll be reporting out to council about the results of those forums sometime during the month of October. I've also started forming my Blue Ribbon Citizens Committee for getting opinions on cannabis retail here in the city as well. So a lot of efforts moving forward on that front. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now is comments by city council members and agenda items, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank your staff, their hard work, their clear votes. I'd also like to thank you for the public comment. And I also like to thank you, every citizen coming this meeting. And again, I also like to thank you, Barbara Payne, she joining us tonight. I did join a couple events. I attended Galt Police Department swearing-in and promotion ceremony. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you for your service. And I also attend the Farm to Fork Dinner this weekend. It was a great evening. Thank you to FFA and all the sponsor. The student did a great job. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Papinow.
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, thank you again, Barbara, for joining us. It's a sure treat. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to get out to the garden today and some stuff come up. I attended the Police Department swearing-in also. Congratulations to Sergeant Hanson and Dispatch Supervisor Sotelo on their promotions. And then also welcoming Officer Steel, Austin Steel, or Steel two point O, on his appointment and welcome to the department. Went to the Skate Park Design Community Input Meeting on the eleventh, and that was pretty well attended. I, I thought there was some good input in chatting with folks, so. And then, as Councilmember Papinow said, fentanyl awareness presentation at McCaffrey was a good presentation. And they are also looking for any other organizations that they can present to or schools. And so they're, they're working on that. I can't remember how many she said that they had visited this year already, but it was quite a few throughout the, throughout the region, so. Thanking Et Koonzie from the Teen Center for putting that together. And also a big thank you to Lois Yant from the School District Board, or School District for hosting at the school. And then lastly, we had a pretty small turnout for, on the thirteenth, for the Business Crime Community Forum. Vice Mayor and I were there and it, but it was really well done. I want to thank the chief and staff for, for putting those together and certainly the city manager for, for leading that effort. And that is all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. For myself, I promise I'm not trying to set a world's record, even though I feel like I'm rather rushed this evening. Barbara, I was remiss in wishing you the best from Mr. Sean Farmer. He is up to his neck times two, preparing for the Old Galt Festival. So he had many hours of labor still to go. And so he's feel like, I'm pretty sure he feels like he's chasing his tail at this point, and hopefully he'll find it. Thank you, Gail, for speaking in public comment about Galt Place. And city manager, I also like to thank you for reading that memo into the record. It's, it's frustrating for us to hear these complaints, and we just can't go out and snatch the problem away because we're required by law to follow certain procedures, and they always take longer than we like. As everybody knows, government generally takes longer than everybody likes. It doesn't make it any better, but believe me, we are supportive of what the police and the city manager's efforts are trying to resolve this. They are trying to do the best they, or they are doing the best they can. It's just not going as fast as I would like, and I imagine yourself as well. So I watched the end of the meeting, and I wanted to thank the police chief for, for being a stand-up person when things were brought into question and you addressed it directly and took charge of it. I really appreciate that. When people make public comments or ourselves make comments, it's often out of frustration, and we shouldn't take offense to it as often as it can easily be offensive. We shouldn't take offense to it necessarily and try and find resolutions for people's good intentions. So I appreciate everybody's effort in that area. I also attended the skate park, what do you call it? Presentation, public, public forum. It was really good to see the skateboarders out there, not just, you know, not just someone like me that skateboarded in nineteen eighty-three. So, and they had some, some good input. It was good to see, the skate park is quite cleaned out. And I think I took a picture and all there is is one rail and that's about it. So I'm looking forward to what that will bring. Thank you for the update on the C Street and finally seeing a pickleball court in Galt. I hope the people play the bajibis out of it. And the final thing I would like to say is that if you have your granddaughter, paint your fingernails. Pick the color, because she'll pick humor over practicality. So, and I promised her I'd keep it on, so I'm living up to my promises. So with that, I would like to end the meeting at seven forty-three PM. Thank you.